Good evening. Welcome to the Select Board meeting of October 6, 2025. I am Select Board Chair Diane Mahan and to my right, or maybe your left?
John Hurd.
Eric Helmut.
Leonard Diggins.
Steve De Corsi.
James Feeney, Town Manager.
Mike Cunningham, Town Council.
Ashley Marwood, Administrator.
Thank you. And going to the agenda, if I could ask our Town Council to come join us at the table?
Sure.
Oh, Town Council and Town Clerk, since you're both here. I mean, Town Moderator, sorry. The Town Moderator, yes.
Oh, you have the moderator?
And the Clerk.
What? Who do you need?
We already have the Council.
I know. I'm losing. Please join us, both of you, just a second. We'll go to the first agenda item, discussion to fill a vacancy on the Select Board. First, I will turn it over to correctly this time Town Council.
Thank you, Madam.
Always on my mind.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is a memo included for the board and for the public in the materials for today's meeting. In the event that there is a vacancy on the Select Board due to a resignation or some other cause other than the expiration of a member's term, there is a process by which a new member would be appointed on interim basis. That process is set forth in the Town Manager Act, Article III. Specifically, it calls for the remaining four members to vote along with the Town Moderator to appoint an interim Select Board member. The term of that office would be for until the annual town election. I put in the memo that the possible date for the annual town election would be April 4th of 2026. That's the first Saturday in April, which is what is dictated by our town bylaws. That is obviously subject to change depending on whether the board deems it inconvenient for the town or if there's a religious observance that might conflict. So that date is not official yet, but that's the possible date. Yeah, obviously, that would be something that a resignation has to be, has to have occurred prior to the board's consideration of any of these matters under Article III. I was just simply setting forth the process in the event that a vacancy is, it does occur and is present.
Thank you. And now, with a tender, bittersweet heart, we'll turn over to our Vice Chair, Mr. Diggins.
Oh, so I go now as opposed to the end of the meeting?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I could just hear my parents in my head from, hopefully, wherever they are up above saying, "Yes, what?" Yes, please.
So normally, I really don't like to read speeches, you know, but if I don't, it will get rambly and I'll end up saying, you know, a lot less and a lot more words. So I'm gonna read a little something that I put together for tonight, you know. So some of you may be wondering if changing the bylaws to allow a non-resident to be the Arlington's poet laureate was the first hint, meaning that I might be leaving town. It was not. But I'm sure those conspiracists are predicting my return to prominence as the next poet laureate will deluge, who will deluge the town in haikus. Well, maybe, but that'll be in some other universe. Kidding aside, it's hard to give this goodbye when I don't want to say goodbye nor do I feel like I'm going away. I'm simply stepping down from my role as the Selectman on the Arlington Select Board because I'm moving to Somerville. Essentially, I will be at the other end of Broadway in the eastern part of Somerville, which I think of as east Arlington. Interestingly, since I moved here from New Orleans 14 years ago last month, with the exception of one year when I lived in Austin, in the Austin part of Boston, I've either lived in Arlington, Cambridge, or Somerville. I cross the borders of all three locations on a weekly and often daily basis, and I tend to think of them as Camberville. That's C-A-M-B-A-R-L-V-I-L-L-E. Still, this night ends what has been an honor and a privilege and an amazing experience. When I was asked to consider running for the Select Board, initially I said no. Though I love the minutia of local governance and the challenges of policymaking, there are elements of the role that do not appeal to someone like me who, believe it or not, is much more of an introvert than an extrovert. For various reasons, I reconsidered, and I'm glad I did. I would do it again. The slogan for my first campaign was making connections, finding solutions. That has always been my goal, and it's what I enjoy doing. Actually, it's not that I find solutions, but that I work with others to create solutions and to generalize a solution for a particular instance into a policy for the greater populace. It is this collaborative effort, the exchange of ideas, that energizes me. What also excites me is tapping into the potential of connections to do new things and to become better in the process, even when our attempts sometimes fail, because it's those failures, it's in those failures that we often learn most of ourselves. Though there have been, though there have been some failures on my part, excuse me, there have been some failures on my part, and I've come up short of expectations and goals much more than I would like. I'm not the smartest and the quickest, but I work hard and I try to keep up and at least put in a good effort. There have been some successes along the way. The first that comes to mind is virtual town meeting. To pull that off during the first year of the pandemic was quite the accomplishment, and I thank Eric Helmut, who wasn't even the Select Board at that time, for his key role in making that happen along with many others, including a large number of Arlington staff. Though for some, virtual town meeting is as highly regarded as Boston City Hall, I say, I'll say this, the attendance was nearly 240 town meeting members, if not more, during every session of all virtual town meeting sessions, which is significantly higher, meaning than the in-person sessions of town meeting before and after, before and after the pandemic. And by the way, you know, I really like Boston City Hall. I mean, I think it is a wonderfully, brutally complex structure, you know. Second, the banner policy, though it may have seemed, and probably still seems to some, to many, that I was conservative or at least anti-liberal by taking the position of removing all banners from Town Hall and making it a banner-free space. To me, I was as liberal as possible because by not having banners from Town Hall, I wanted to make it clear that Town Hall is here to serve every resident. As long as they abide by the law, they should expect, expect to be served and treated well and as equals by staff and electeds. I worked to move this policy forward while I was Chair despite the fact that the issue regarding banners had calmed down a lot, because I feel the time to deal with potentially controversial issues is when tensions and emotions are low and everyone is able to think more clearly. I tried to get us to work on a government speech policy, but there were roadblocks, and even in Chair, there was only so much energy and time in the day. At least that's how I rationalized my failure on that effort. Nonetheless, I asked my soon-to-be former colleagues to hash that out. It is complex and challenging, but I think it will be worth the effort, and we'll all learn more about what it really means to be tolerant. Overnight parking. Yes, overnight parking was on the agenda a lot while I was Chair, and we got the pilot trial underway. Thankfully, it worked out well enough, meaning that we are allowing a lot more permanent overnight parking on a permanent basis. It's a start, and hopefully, this is the beginning of a process of revolutionizing our approach to parking, which will result in the increased sharing of vehicles and the ability to build more housing for both those who need and don't need parking. Jim Feeney, I was happy to be a part of the Town Manager Search Committee, and having been a part of that process, I can assure you that everyone on that committee was committed to the integrity of the process. We owed that to the town, and we owed that to whichever candidate ultimately prevailed. It has been a real pleasure working with him. I see him more of a partner, more as a partner, and I enjoy our 30-minute conversations on most Friday mornings. We packed a lot into that half hour, and I always enjoyed ending the conversations impressed with his, with Jim's knowledge and dedication to his role. He is energetic and creative, and having the opportunity to work with him more was one big reason I wanted to run again for another term and possibly one more after that. Lastly, at this most recent Town Day, we started doing acknowledgements of and giving a small token of appreciation to those members of our 80-plus commissions and committees who have recently retired. It has taken a while to figure out an appropriate platform that announces to the whole town our gratitude for the service of the many volunteers. As we all know, though, making the time and putting in the effort to give thanks gives, makes us appreciate even more the benefits we have received. My hope is that we will do that each year at Town Day, and you know what? I'll be around to try to make sure that happens. It has been made clear to me that I'm expected to continue working on the Town Day Planning Committee, because it doesn't matter if I live in Somerville or Malden or some other city or town. I also plan to continue my work with the Division Arlington Standing Committee, and I will be even more involved in the survey this year. I also plan to double my efforts to get the young Arlington Collaborative fully populated, and a lot of town meeting members will be hearing from me, especially at their precinct meetings. Finally, as much as I've enjoyed being on the Select Board, there are lots of appropriate constraints on the role so that we interact with each other well, the Town Manager and staff. Now I can interact with the Town Manager even more as an equal or as a volunteer that reports to him. Also, I feel a sense of liberation. I don't have to worry if being nicer is going to be misinterpreted as a ploy to get re-elected. I can tell it like it is, and sometimes that means I get to tell people how much I like them and respect them and enjoy working with them. Thankfully, there are lots of people in this town that make me feel that way, and I will be in touch with you. So, of course, I have to end with a haiku, right? So here goes. Constantly we change. Adapt, evolve, move forward. I will see you soon.
Before, I've been blocking this since I found out last week, even thinking about doing a speech, but just to set out the process and sort of piggyback on what Town Council has said, we do have 30 days to fill the vacancy. It will be the remainder of the board along with the Town Moderator, Mr. Christiana. It will be on the October 20th agenda for appointment. The process will be a little bit different, but sort of what we've done before, but a little more formalized. I would ask anyone who would like to express an interest to fill the vacancy until the next local election to contact either one of the members of the board, Mr. De Corsi, Mr. Hurd, Mr. Helmut, or the Town Moderator, Mr. Christiana, by Wednesday, October 15th at 4:00 PM. Mr. Christiana, what's the best way to reach you besides in person?
The best way is by email.
By email. Town email.
Yeah, which is, you probably know better than I do, gchristiana@.
Town.arlington MA.us.
And just before we get into individual things, I believe, Madam Clerk, we have set the local election date for next year?
I have not received a formal notice.
Have we not? Okay. So, once we have all that, and then the process from there on in, we'll explain on the 20th. So as Chair, I get to go last. So I'm gonna go last with remarks from Mr. Diggins. Who would like to start off? Want to go by seniority?
You don't have to say anything if you don't want to say.
How about the youngest?
Mr. Helmut. I'll go for that.
Thank you. Just a quick procedural note for the public. Can we ascertain when the vacancy will actually begin?
The vacancy will begin, and the Clerk or Town Council can correct me on this, after Monday, October 20th. Attorney Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The vacancy is effective the date in the letter contained by the leaving, the departing Select Board member. I believe that's going to be tomorrow pursuant to Mr. Diggins' letter and wishes. So if that's the case, then the 30-day clock will begin tomorrow.
But the member, I believe, won't be officially in a chair until after we vote on the 20th, after they, I believe, Madam Clerk, do they have to be sworn in by you?
Yes, they should be, yeah.
And I'm not sure if there's any ethics. Attorney Cunningham.
Well, I'll run them through the whole process.
Okay, so that's.
Madam Chair, you are correct, though. So any potential interim member that the board is considering will not be participating in the meeting on October 20th. That will be a meeting at which the four remaining members and the Moderator will evaluate potential candidates and choose someone at that time. And then with the assistance of the Clerk, we would get that member who was ever chosen by the board by a majority vote ready for the following Select Board meeting.
Mr. Helmut.
Thank you very much. I expect an opportunity in the future to say more, because it was a traditional ceremony. I think that the board has, often does perform members at a future date. But right now, I think that I want to express and reflect upon my appreciation for Mr. Diggins' real passion for engagement and not for himself. I think that everything that he has done, so clearly has been for other people, and out of a sure passion for getting people from all walks of life involved and engaged in our government. And that is a tremendous legacy that I know will continue, and you really hit all the high points of that, and I think you're justly proud of those efforts, and it was my privilege to be a little part of that on the online Zoom part of it, along with Mr. Christianas and 240 other people. But I think that that speaks really loudly for the kind of leader that you are and have been for Arlington, and we will always be grateful for that. Thank you.
Mr. Hurd.
Thank you. I want to first thank you for your service. I know, I remember the first time we sat down right after you had announced that you were running for the Select Board, it might even have been the Board of Select at the time, but we were over at Kickstand, and I think it was about a week before the hammer of COVID came down, and we're gonna have a second meeting, and that never happened. And it was an odd election, because I think the election was in like June.
Delayed by two months.
So it was the longest election season ever. But I am so truly glad you decided to run. It has been a pleasure working with you. I think your enthusiasm for the position, when you come to meetings and talk about all the sub-meetings and committee meetings that you attend, is mind-blowing to me, because I know you have plenty of other, other activities, impersonal and professional, outside of what you do even on this board. So to make time for all those other extracurricular activities is really amazing. And I think, I've said this before, in, I think, last time you were running, one of the things I like is that we can disagree agreeably, right? We're not always on the same side of every issue. Sometimes we are, sometimes we're not, but you always participate in a way that's very respectful. And I always was very impressed about how you, when you come across somebody that might not agree on something, you engage them and you ask questions, and you try to get to understand their position and how they got to that position. And at times, I think it helps mold your positions as well. And that openness is something that you don't always see in local government or any government at any level. And I think it's a model for, you know, a lot of people that want to be involved in the process to have that type of mentality. So it really has been a pleasure working with you, and we'll, we'll have to take the reins on some of the curiosity questions as people come up and try to get a little more information for the public out of the presenters. So I wish you the best of luck, and I know we'll see you often, and definitely stay on the Town Day Committee.
Thank you, Mr. De Corsi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I just want to say, Mr. Diggins, it's been a pleasure serving with you these last four, four and a half years, and I really enjoyed the subcommittees that we're on, and you mentioned overnight parking, and you think we had a lot of meetings among the board, we had a lot of subcommittee meetings as well, but I think we got to a good place, and you were really on the forefront of that and set up some public forums that were really important to get people engaged, and so I really appreciated that. I want to thank you for your service. I'm gonna miss you on the board. I enjoyed working with you. And the other thing I think I'd have to say, beyond anybody who came to that table for an appointment, new board members, particularly Mr. Diggins, had read their resumes because there were questions, and whether he deemed them curiosity questions or whatever, it showed an interest in the people that were coming to serve, and I think it was appreciated by those people. Also appreciate the year that you served as Chair. You did a great job leading the board that year. And I also, you know, one thing that Mr. Diggins mentioned, because of open meeting law and discussions, we don't discuss things, I mean, and Len probably more than, we all follow the open meeting law, okay, but Len was really, particularly in his year as a Chair, he would say, "You're my one person on this, and here's who I'm gonna talk to, and I respect your integrity on that," in following what should be a deliberation as among the full members of the board. You knew, can't talk to three people, but you can talk to one person maybe about it, and you were very careful to do that, and that was appreciated. And just your work really with the public, we're seeing it with Town Meeting already this fall. You would like to see more precinct meetings, and you're willing to engage people in those discussions and facilitate those discussions, and so I think that is quite a legacy that you're leaving for the town. So best of luck to you. I know we'll see each other, and it's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
Mr. Feeney.
No, I have the opportunity. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say it has been an absolute pleasure, Mr. Diggins. In brief, obviously, thank you for your support of myself, but I will say your support of all town staff has been unwavering, and it hasn't gone unnoticed, and it's always been appreciated by the staff. So on behalf of the staff, I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you. And I guess I'll round it out there with, it's really hard for me to even think about things with Len. When you first decided to run and we sort of became family that way, having to run in the same cycle, and I can tell, and every member of the board can tell you this, Len speaks for and speaks of the four members of this board, sometimes to the detriment of himself. This is a compliment for me. You're the biggest cheerleader for all of us, and that's very unique for someone who's in politics and a politician. You're definitely the converse of that, and I know that's true because I had so many people coming up to me remarking about, particularly the years that both you and I were up, they're like, gee, I miss that Len Diggins, I really like him, but did you pay him money or something? He was asking for my vote, but then he also spoke so well of you. And he also did that for my other colleagues who didn't have the pleasure of running with him. And one of the things I really appreciate that you have done, but had done really silently is, and you know the 5 o'clock AM text that we set up the time to meet, is that a lot of people say things and they try to mean what they say, but sometimes they don't. But you really are a believer and someone who follows through on the issue, whether it's a majority issue or a minority issue. You always would say to me, "It's great that there's 200 people who have signed something, but it's just as impassful to me if one or two people have come to me with an issue." And you practice that every day as you are a member of this board. So I'm not gonna stop texting you at 5:00 AM. We're not gonna stop our calls. We already had one last week.
Yeah.
We have them just about weekly, and I love you a lot, and I'm not a crier. I told both my kids when they got married, "Don't be mad at me when I don't cry. I'm just not a crier." But you've definitely put a lump in my throat, so love you, and we'll move forward on this.
Thank you very much.
So, thank you. And we will be back on this again on the 20th, but I don't want to think about it anymore. So with that, we will, Mr. Hurd, I'm sorry.
Sorry. So are we setting any parameters or expectations for the application like we've done in the past?
That's what I.
Because I know anyone can.
Yeah, I want to get a sense of the board. In the past, I've been through this three times, and some of us, as many, not as many. In the past, the board has been told we cannot make this a requirement, but we can stay to preference. Is that right, Attorney Cunningham?
Yes, Madam Chair.
And I would like to get a sense of the board. In the past, the preference has been if you are interested, if you can indicate if you are interested just to fill the remaining term, or if you are interested and you also plan on running in the local election, and that's something that we can, Attorney Cunningham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, it can't be required, and a commitment can't be required of a potential interim member. However, the board can consider that, and the voting members and the moderator can consider that during their deliberations as something that they want to put weight upon when casting their vote on potential, you know, interim members.
Or any other thought you might have, so, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine. I just, I know before, we've always kind of, or at least I have, but I think generally the board has expressed an interest in appointing somebody that says they don't intend to run for the full seat, because it's kind of unfair for the board to create an incumbency effect and help somebody who will ultimately run for the seat. And so, you know, I think that's something, again, anyone can apply and they can say whatever they want, but for me, that would certainly be a weighing factor on who I'd want to support.
Mr. Helmut, anything you want to add or add?
I agree with that. I think that would be important to me. I would also add that in addition to my concern that appointing someone who runs could be seen as helping that person, I think it may not actually do a favor for someone who is a candidate because, because of the fact that the current board appointed them, and they may want to express a certain independence of thought and of influence. So my recommendation and my intent would be to carefully consider that factor, and my personal preference would be likely to go towards a candidate who expressed they did not have an intention of running for the, for the full seat in April.
Mr. De Corsi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, I agree with Mr. Hurd and Mr. Helmut, and again, you can't require it, but for me, that would be very important, because I think it would be unfair to give somebody an advantage to be in a position for the, for the next election. So for myself, I'll be looking at that very carefully, and I think the precedent that has followed, has been followed in the past, was a good one.
Mr. Christiana.
Yeah, first of all, I take the principle of separation of powers, especially at the local level here, which is relevant, very seriously. And so I'm participating in this process because I'm legally obligated to. I suppose I could abstain from the vote for Mr. Diggins' replacement, but I feel I have a legal obligation to see that the Select Board has a full complement and that deliberation is done in the way that's prescribed in the Town Manager Act. And so taking that principle of separation of powers even further to apply it to the Select Board, and I'm suggesting this only because I'm included as moderator in this process, that I think it serves the interests of the board and the town more broadly when there's as much independence as possible between the members of the Select Board. So the idea that the Select Board might choose someone for political reasons, like someone who might be a weaker candidate, for instance, to run against at the April election, there's all sorts of reasons, and it makes it much simpler and easier if the person who is nominated collectively by us is not planning to participate in that political process.
Thank you. I'll agree, and I'm not gonna say much more, because I also will be up for reelection without you. Okay, so we don't need to vote, Attorney Cunningham, because the process is laid out by law, and we're following that, so there's nothing to codify, correct?
Correct, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So with that, we will go to, thank you, everyone, for being here and waiting patiently. Consent agenda. First, Consent Agenda Item 5, still needs some things to happen, so, and I will not call an emergency meeting. So if I could take a motion to postpone the request for a one-day beer and wine license on October 26, 2025 by?
So move.
Mr. Hurd, seconded by?
Diggins.
Mr. Diggins. Any further questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous vote. Five is taken care of. Consent agenda. Minutes of meetings, September 29, 2025. Request for contractor drain layer license. Michael Clary Jr., Inc. Stephen Clary, Bill Rickam, Mass. And temporary parking request for Spooky Walk, October 25, 2025. Scott Lever, lever, sorry, if I might have said it once correctly and once incorrectly. I don't think anyone's here from Spooky Walk, right? If not, I'll take a motion by?
So moved.
Mr. DeCoursey, seconded by.
Second.
Mr. Hurd. Any questions or comments on anything on consent agenda? If not, a motion by Mr. Diggins?
I guess, I'm trying to see, like, what are the parking restrictions, you know, that they're requesting for the spooky walk? When I, am I just missing what they're asking for?
Let me see if, I have it printed out, if it's not coming up on reference material.
I mean, it's saying that they will ask for them, you know, but I just don't see exactly what they're asking for, you know.
Yeah.
But I could be missing it, you know, so.
Yeah, we don't have that from, I guess if we could ask the town manager, nobody knows. I'm trying to think, I think there's a, well, anyways, Park and Rec, I don't know if they already voted on it, if we know the dates.
Madam Chair, I would defer to Ms. Mar on the request.
Thank you, Ms. Mar. They were approved by the Parks and Rec Commission for the special event at their last meeting. The parking request is just to remove the limitations on time. I can look, you're correct that it is not listed. I can go back and look and circle back at last year's application, because it's the exact same.
Okay, all right, that's fine, that's fine, so, yeah, no problem. I tend to read the consent last meeting, so, otherwise, if I read it earlier, I would have called, so, yeah, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? If not, a motion by Mr. DeCoursey, seconded by Mr. Hurd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous vote. We'll now go to appointments. Disability Commission, Vicki Crossen, term to expire June 30, 2028. Is Vicki with us?
Just ask if she's on Zoom to raise their hand. Seeing no hands, please.
No hands, okay. If you're there, Ms. Crossen, and just having a problem zooming in, just keep trying. And if anyone, Ms. Mar or any of my colleagues, see her pop up, because I haven't figured out how to do that yet, I have everything else, we'll come back to it, so I won't table it or anything right now. I will go to open forum, and if you would like to participate in open forum, if you're here in the chambers, you can just actually physically raise your hand. If you're out in Zoom and you need to virtually raise your hand, please do that after I read the preamble for open forum, just the bottom of your screen, you should see a little, usually hand, sometimes yellow, click on that if you would like to speak under open forum. Except in unusual circumstances, any matter presented for consideration of the board shall neither be acted upon nor decision made the night of the presentation in accordance with the policy under which the open forum was established. It should be noted that there is a three-minute time limit to present a concern or request. Is there anyone here who would like to speak under open forum? Is there anyone joining us by Zoom?
Seeing no hands, please.
Seeing no hands, open forum is closed. I will now go to traffic rules and orders and other business. Agenda item seven, for review and discussion, host community agreement, Calix Peak of Mass. Mr. Feeney, or?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do believe we invited representatives of Calix Peak to join us this evening to provide a status update on their locating a facility in Arlington per the host community agreement that was ratified previously.
Okay, and I believe they're joining us by Zoom.
That's practice.
Hi, good evening. If you could just state your name for the record and position.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name's Peter Dagostino with Tenex Strategies, here with an office at 100 Franklin Street, Boston, Massachusetts, here on behalf of Calix Peak. Also joining me is the CEO of Calix Peak, Howard Coombe.
Yeah, hi there. Sorry, can you guys hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, Howard.
Oh, hi, thank you very much for having me here, appreciate it.
Okay, we have this on the agenda because we, the board granted the HCA host community agreement a little over two years ago, I believe, Attorney Cunningham?
Madam Chair, the host community agreement with Calix Peak was signed on March 1, 2022.
Three, one, 2022. And we just wanted to bring you in for sort of a status update, where you are and where you are with the sort of, I guess, one of the most important things, which is a site that you have local control over, and any other things that either my colleagues or the proponents would like to speak to. So I don't know if Mr., I'll turn to see if anyone else here wants to say anything first. If not, I'll see if Mr. Dagostino or Mr. Coombe would like to speak.
I'm happy to go, Madam Chair, if the other members don't have something first.
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay. First, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Mr. Diggins for his service. I think we were somewhat near the beginning of his term on the select board in the very, very first round of host community agreements in Arlington. So thank you, Member Diggins, for your service, and it's been a pleasure working with you. But to the matter before the board tonight, the current status, we've been negotiating with this landlord for some period of time. We currently have a signed letter of intent regarding the property that we are attempting to finalize the lease on. I did receive a call from the landlord today at about 4:30, 4:45, in which he said he wasn't sure if he was going to sign the lease, so we are very much up in the air on that. We have not heard from his counsel to that effect, and we're waiting to hear where that may land. Certainly, if that were to be the case, I would reach out to the town administrator and inform him of that. I will, I do think it's noteworthy for the board to know that during this time, Calix has spent about $400,000 on this site. We've had substantial holding costs, which have been paid to the landlord during this time of over $100,000. We've hired engineers, architects. The board may remember, we did file something with the planning department, with the ARB, and that was, included a full set of plans. We've done traffic studies, lawyers, consultants such as myself. So this has been a very substantial investment for Calix over a long period of time. I don't want to speak for Howie, and I'm sure he's happy to weigh in, but I will tell you that they are extremely committed to Arlington. They really want to be in this town. We have had substantial challenges with finalizing the lease with the property owner. However, that is something that we continue to work on. Given the call I got just before this meeting, I suspect we may have some clarity on that before the end of the week, and to that end, I would update the town administrator as soon as I have that clarity. But I did want to note for the board the investment here, because Calix is not sitting back hoping for the best and hoping that someday this comes together, but they've made a relatively large investment to be part of Arlington. And I think if, for some reason, this property didn't come to fruition, my hope would be that they'd have the opportunity to evaluate another site in town. But that likely would be a separate matter for the board to consider, so I certainly wouldn't propose that tonight, but I just wanted to give you full transparency on where we are as of 4:30 today.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Coombe, if you would like to say anything? You don't have to, it's up to you.
No, I was going to say, Mr. Dagostino's done a very good job of explaining our situation. It has been somewhat frustrating for us, given the resources, the amount of work we've put into it, there was no stone unturned. It just comes down to, you know, finalizing an agreement.
Okay. I'll say to my colleagues that I did put it on tonight for an update, not for a vote. I would anticipate, this is what I plan on doing, but I want to hear what my colleagues have to say and go forward, I would anticipate putting it on the October 20 agenda for a vote unless something else comes out of the discussion, just in the sense that it's been three years, and I'll stop there. But we can, what I would say is, if there was a vote on the 20th, and that was to say that, you know, the approval given back in March of 2022 has run its course, unless, of course, something happened between now and the 20th, and they were able to present that that night, the applicant still would be, have the opportunity to refile going forward in the future. But to hold on to this license for three, going on four years now, with other things coming up, including the override, one of the things we've, we're going to have to do moving forward is talk about commitments and an override, and demonstrate to the voting public, regardless of how they vote, what it is we're trying to do to do the best for the town. But I would like to maybe hear from any of my colleagues, if they wish, or Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you both for joining us tonight. I know Mr. Dagostino's been attending meetings for many years, and for me, we put this on our agenda last on December 4, 2024, and at that time, we said that we're reaching the point where reasonable time, we said, we're not going to say the reasonable time limit has been reached on December 4, 2024, but we said we're getting very close to that time point. So I appreciate the fact that you're putting this on the agenda again on October 20, and it's too bad, for whatever reason, that you're having with the landlord, but it seems to me that what was contemplated was a host community agreement that contemplated the Summer Street location. As of this date, there's still not control of it, so you're always free to come back with another location for the board's consideration, but personally, I think, you know, unless something was signed up, I think we're past that limit, and it would be time to move on and put that back out there as an available license. And I don't feel, I feel badly about the investment that you made, but at the same time, we were just about there last December on this, and unfortunately, things haven't happened, and it sounds like there's a number of challenges, but I think I just want to be upfront with you, that's how I would vote. I would say this, we are past that period now, and unfortunately, it's time to move on.
No, I appreciate that, Member DeCoursey, and as you know, I have met with you and the board several times at public meetings. I will just clarify one point, we do have property control today through a letter of intent. However, I think the point somewhat moot, I just wanted to clarify that. I think, you know, the overarching issue is finalizing the lease, which, based on the call I got tonight, is, you know, I may have some clarity on very, very soon, but I did want to clarify that we do have property control as of right now, that agreement's still in place. So again, I don't raise that for any point other than to clarify it, but I understand certainly both your comments and, you know, the need to finalize the lease and move forward or not. So I appreciate, you know, your candor as always.
Thank you. Mr. Hurd?
Yeah, I'd just say, I know Calix Peak was at the original hearing that we had, and I've always been incredibly impressed with the company and the presentations and the professionalism, so I thought it was, even compared to some of the other applicants that we had, including ones that got licenses, I thought Calix Peak kind of shadowed them a little bit. So, you know, I was looking forward to having Calix Peak as part of the community. I think, you know, there were certainly limitations in the first go-around, where, you know, three applicants were all within the distance of each other. And we put one on each side of the town, so there's not a whole lot of space in between to find, I think, you know, this site meets the distance requirements, but has a lot of challenges, too, that would create. So, you know, I echo Mr. DeCoursey's thoughts, and I feel like that we're at the point, we'd certainly love to invite Calix Peak to continue the investment in the town if another location can be obtained, but, yeah, I think we're there.
Mr. Helmut?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I feel the same way as my other two colleagues. I do appreciate the interest, and I believe it's a sincere interest and a commitment to try to do business in Arlington. I agree with Mr. Hurd that Calix Peak has been, showed a lot of skill, and, but I also have to agree with Mr. DeCoursey that just in the best interest of the residents, the taxpayers of the town, that we very, you know, if we don't have something imminently over the next two weeks that shows it's going to move forward, I think it's time to move on, and that's how I would vote.
Thank you. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I won't be voting, you know, but, but, as you recall, when you came before us, in my first term, you know, I was, I mean, on the three side of a three-two vote, meaning to not give you the license, and I said at the time, soon after which, I regretted that vote, and so I was glad that you got a chance again. The last time you were here, though, I asked you, when did you think you were going to open, I mean, and you said June, you know, and so, so that didn't happen, and I guess I'm just not clear on why that didn't happen, but I do have to say, you know, I mean, if I had to bet, you know, let me start again, if you gave me a date, and then someone asked me, do you believe they're going to meet that line, I would just say no, you know, so, so, I mean, can you just explain a little bit more why you didn't open in June? I mean, and there's the lease issue, but what's, beyond, I guess, I just want to understand a little bit more what's going on with why you can't get the lease?
I know, it's a fair question. I'll probably moderate my comments slightly, and I hope the board can appreciate it. In the event that the agreement didn't come to terms, in light of the substantial investment, Calix Peak may evaluate their options moving forward, so I would limit my comments to say that there's been substantial negotiations with the property owner to include a couple of, or several provisions to the proposed plan. From what we initially agreed on, that what the landlord has required since that initial agreement has changed, we've had civil engineers out to the site several times, meeting with the landlord to continue to amend the plan to meet his request, and that just takes a lot of time. So I hope you can appreciate, I'm probably not going to get into a lot of the details, as you can imagine, but I would say that it's largely based on continued negotiations and amendments to what was originally agreed on by the property owner. And so we're continuing to have that conversation evolve, but it seems as though we may have reached the end of the House discussions, and if that were the case, I will certainly call town administrator and let him know that. And I've tried to keep the most open line of communication I can with the town administrator as well, just so the board has a access point if they need an interim update. I've tried to keep town administrator updated with what we know, so.
Thank you. Mr.?
I'd like to throw a couple, I'd like to throw a couple of comments in there as well. You know, I know this has been a long process, and I appreciate all your time and helping us on this effort, but just to give you an idea, Calix Peak in 2022, in another state in Missouri, rebuilt an 85,000-square facility from the ground up. We have given 160 jobs between that vertical operation in that state, and we got that done in about half the time. The big difference is, you know, once we were able to get all the parties to agree, and we have been having a difficult time, you know, getting this agreement set, but our ability to execute, our ability to get done once things are done, is definitely there.
Thank you.
Just to echo on Mr. Coombe's point, I would say that if anybody has a relationship with the town of Swampscott, I would welcome you to reach out to the town. We have an incredibly good relationship. We built a building there. We actually tore a building down, as we're proposing here, we're actually not tearing the building down here, but we tore the building down in Swampscott and built it from new, from the ground up. That is a town-owned building, so the town is actually our landlord, and that has been an incredible relationship with that community, and they could tell you our ability to execute against timelines and plans. We met all of the timelines and plans, but we had a willing participant, who was the town, and as it relates to getting the project done. And so, you know, to anybody that wanted to reach out, I, you know, I have no idea who you'll call or when you'll call them, but I think you'll find that we're doing a good job for that community, and, you know, significant construction with demoing an entire building and rebuilding a new one. So to Howie's point, you know, we have the ability to execute, certainly, and, you know, we have a hurdle ahead of us. Seems as though, as I mentioned, we may have some clarity this week on that, and certainly keep the town administrator up to date, as I know more.
Thank you. So, Mr. Feeney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the update this evening, look forward to hearing more, but if I'm hearing the board correctly, this is something we may consider placing on the agenda for October 20 as well.
That would be yes. And I'll see the town manager and town council at the pre-SEB prep meeting, so that the proper language will be in there, and it will be properly noticed. And unless something happens between now and October 20th, this will be on the agenda for a vote. Thank you. Thank you to my colleagues for allowing me this opportunity. So we will, and thank you, Mr. Coombe, and I hope Calix Peak, I hope we can do whatever we can to come to Arlington, as my colleagues mentioned. I also was very impressed with your presentation and did look forward and continue to look forward to see if Arlington can be home for the type of operation and establishment and principles that you have been doing business as in other communities. So hopefully, that can happen. But we will have a vote on October 20th. So now, moving to Agenda Item 8.
Thank you all very much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, take care.
Take care. Have a good night. For approval, East Arlington proposed safety vote from our Transportation Advisory Committee. Stube, Mr. Mazur, please, if you could, thank you. Just name an affiliation, just for the record.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, the rest of the board. My name is Ofer Mazur. I live on Fairmont Street in Arlington, and I've been a member of TAC for about eight months now as a full member, and about a year prior to that as associate member. Are there slides? Looking at, or no slides?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So I come today to present TAC's proposal for a safety zone in East Arlington. So following up on the recent safety zone in Arlington Heights, TAC has been working to look at other commercial zones in town to see about the possibility of putting safety zones there. And so this is the next step in that process. So the proposed zone today is in East Arlington, along Mass Ave, starting on the west, just outside of Orvis Street, and continuing for about a third of a mile eastward to the intersection with Varnum Street, so including both of those intersections. Yes, if we can move to the next slide. So what's the rationale for putting a safety zone here with these boundaries? As you know very well, that section of Mass Ave is one of the major commercial centers in town, and it draws a lot of vulnerable users due to the shops, services, restaurants, numerous MBTA bus stops, and it's on the route to school for a number of the town's elementary school students at Hardy and Thompson and Leslie Ellis, as well as sixth graders in Gibbs and older students as well. So in addition to bringing in vulnerable users, there are a lot of potential points of user-vehicle conflict. That stretch of Mass Ave is straight with very long sightlines. It's wide with three lanes of traffic, and it has, I think, four unsignalized crosswalks that cross Mass Ave, and another 14 parallel to Mass Ave's along the side streets. And so that's borne out, that combination of vulnerable users and potential for conflict is borne out in the crash data. So that stretch of Mass Ave has more than its fair share of crashes. In the past five years, there have been 72 crashes, 12 of those including vulnerable users, meaning pedestrians and cyclists. So that's the rationale for doing that. That ties in quite well with the Mass dot criteria that are laid out for what the town needs to meet to establish a safety zone. We have vulnerable users. We have points of conflict between users and vehicles. And at a third of a mile, this zone meets the minimum distance also laid out by Mass dot. So getting further into details, the signage proposed by TAC would include three signs in each direction, eastbound and westbound. So here, we're looking at Mass Ave eastbound. On the left, we propose placing a safety zone, speed limit 20 miles an hour sign, 50 feet before, to the west of Orvis Road, as the first sign. There'd be a second sign just following Lake Street, so that would be about a block later at the intersection with Chandler. And then, at the end of the zone, just past Varnum Street and its associated crosswalk, there'd be an end speed zone sign there. And then on the next slide, we can look at westbound. So here, you can look at the photos from right to left. The first sign would be, again, just before Varnum Street, so about, you know, 100 feet west of it, a safety zone 20 miles per hour sign. Another sign, just following the Lake Street intersection, to make sure that traffic coming in from Lake Street or Cleveland Street are aware that it's a safety zone. And then followed up by an end safety zone sign just past Orvitz and Grafton Street. So that's the request that TAC is making, that propose that the Safety Board approve a safe, excuse me, the Select Board approve a safety zone along Mass Ave from Orvis Road to Varnum Street, inclusive of both of those intersections. And we feel that this would be a first step in reducing vehicle or traffic speeds in that zone, and would improve the safety of all users. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, me.
Mr. Dickens? It's our liaison.
Sure, sure, sure. So, so, okay, first question is, you know, why did you not take the east edge to Route 16?
So, though, the eastern edge was definitely less clear-cut of where that should be, the western edge was pretty clear-cut. So I can speak in terms of the, it's, TAC voted for this proposal, so that's what TAC is bringing to you. In the working group, we were trying to balance including as much of the, you know, critical areas within the zone, and trying to limit the extent of the zone. I guess the fear was if we, if we extend the zone too far into areas where, where drivers don't perceive it as a commercial district, a dense district, then we might lose compliance. So that was sort of the trade-off that we were making, keeping it within the densest part of the commercial zone, and then hopefully, the drivers are on board as well. But I agree that it's not, it was not clear exactly, I don't think there's one right answer about where to put that eastern half.
I hear you. So my concern here is that we, so Scoop and Scootery, it seems like it's like right outside of that zone, you know? And also, we, if you go to the corner of, it's not Thorndike Street, you know, Varnum, I can't remember the name of the street, so.
Honor Magnolia, Fairmont. Oh, you wanna go the other way. Varnum Melrose.
No, 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 no. So bad.
Oh, Varnum Magnolia, Fairmont.
Magnolia, then Thorndike. Thorndike, Thorndike. Yeah, Thorndike. So I just knew at that corner, I mean, there's just a lot of activity, especially at nighttime, you know, because you have a lot of, I guess, people who buy the ice cream and take it, you know, to other people like Grubhub and whatnot. I see like a lot of interesting maneuvers, you know, there, you know, which to me, just kinda makes me want to see everyone slow down, you know? And I know there's a little bit of a gap between Magnolia and then the CVS, you know? But, but, look, when, you know, I'm like big on safety zones, and I thought, well, since I don't drive a whole lot, you know, am I really being unreasonable with respect to what you should expect drivers to do? But in the process of moving, I've been driving a lot, you know? And, and, you know, I'm finding 20, 25 to be, you know, like fast enough, you know? And what I like about, about 20 is that it increases my confidence, I mean, that I can stop if something unexpected happens, you know? And at nighttime, I mean, that's an even greater risk, you know? And I just don't think, I don't think it's too much, you know, to ask for people to go five miles per hour slower, you know? And to just kinda signal that we want you, you know, to go slower because we're concerned, you know? And, and, and they may not comply, you know, but at least they know that we want them to do it. I don't think, I mean, the lack of compliance, I mean, creates other issues, you know? It's not like they won't comply here and now, you know? They're just gonna go crazy, you know, elsewhere because they're not complying here, and I'm just kinda making it up. But, you know, I mean, I don't think there are any negative effects, I mean, from, from lack of compliance. I don't think it, you know, makes people respect our driving rules less, you know? And so, so my inclination would be, you know, to take it to, to 16, you know? And I know, I mean, because, I mean, I've been doing the crossing over Broadway, I know a lot of times, I mean, when you kind of cross over 16, you have a little bit of speed, you know? And so it can be a little hard to just kind of slow down, I mean, in time, but still, you make the effort if you see the sign saying like, I mean, go 25, go 20. So, so that would be my suggestion, is that we, we take it into Mass Ave, but I'm sorry, to Route 16, but I'm not gonna make that motion now, because I wanna hear, you know, what my colleagues have to say.
I, I think the safety zones have been great, and I think it's been successful since we put them in. And I have no problem expanding the safety zone. I would just ask the members from TAC or the town manager if there's any negatives, is there any why not expand it out that far? And if not, then it seems, and I guess on those, on that area, you could say, all right, let's make all of Mass Ave a safety zone. Or is there a reason to kinda narrow it down? They're more effective, through the chair, whoever's appropriate.
Mr. Feeney?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure I have anything necessarily specific to add, other than that I think that this is perhaps more art than science in terms of where you determine the edges. And I do trust that TAC actually debates this quite thoroughly, in terms of folks proposing different starting and end points. So it's been my experience that I generally trust the output insofar as that's what that group or that collection of individuals believe will be the most effective, or will, is perceived as being the most effective range, because it will deliver, you know, the perception of the density of the district and the presence of vulnerable road users directly connected with that sign indicating when the zone starts and when it ends.
Okay. Do you wanna make a comment? You got, no, you have to, no, you have to sit up there. Please.
Just a brief clarification on that particular ending point going eastbound. There was discussion at TAC, and the primary reason in discussion that it got voted to be further west was that the Magnolia intersection is a signalized intersection, so anyone crossing there is sitting with a light that's got a red, you're not worried about crossing the street there. So that was our decision point, but as Ofer said, there's no right or wrong either. So if we wanna go further, we can go further. You know, we did that one, we did the one in the Heights, right? We went all the way to, almost all the way to the Lexington border. So I'm good with that, if that's where we wanna go to. But that was the reasoning behind stopping the zone at that point.
A correction, if I may, the signal is that Thorndike Street, it's not at Magnolia.
But there's no, there's, if I can, there's, there's no, there's no crosswalk at Magnolia. But the next crosswalk is at Thorndike, where there is, which is signalized, and the next one after that is by Boulevard, which has the RFBs, the flashing lights at the crosswalk.
I guess, Mr. Feeney?
Can I add one thing? Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I wonder exactly where, if we were to move the safety zone to begin essentially at the town line, where we might place the safety zone speed limit signage that would not be perceived as perhaps in conflict or contradictory to the exact sign we already have at the town boundary, identifying it as a thickly settled area with a town-wide speed limit of 25 miles per hour? But I feel like we have that one just inside the border, and I wonder if there would be potential driver confusion if we sort of had those placed in the same space.
I guess what I would say is, just on the process question, that, it's not to say this doesn't get extended in the future, but TAC has looked at a certain area. I don't know exactly what they've done, but I know they do a lot of data collection, sometimes along with the police department, sometimes putting out the traffic sign and the traffic counter. And my concern would be is, I would like to vote what's before us and ask TAC to continue to look at expanding it not only in this area, but other areas, but that, I suspect that what TAC did, along with employees of the town, to come up with this recommendation was a certain process, and I think we need to replicate that. Versus, someone could come in with a request and say, you should do it for the whole length of Mass Ave. You know, you should start up by Trader Joe's and go all the way down, because that's a good thing to do. And we would say, it may be, but we need to send it to Transportation Advisory to the traffic unit, get the traffic counts, get them at certain days, certain mornings, certain evenings. So what I'd like to do is start with this, and if I could ask the chairman, if you could just say your name for the record, because I forgot to.
James Stube.
James Stube, just so we have that. And sometimes people go online, and so now they know who had those great remarks. My inclination would be to vote what's before us, but also send back to the Transportation Advisory Committee, which I think they're already doing. Mr. Mazur has indicated to us to expand it, and I know just from a very brief conversation before at the beginning of the meeting, they're certainly looking at the whole length of Mass Ave. And this is the first piece where they've defined a process, they've done everything they needed to do, they wanna institute it here. Because I imagine, and what I hope, is that when, if this does get voted or a version of it, that other people will see it and say, not only take note to slow down, but to take note to say, you know, I wanna fill this out to see if we can expand it some more. So that would be my thoughts. Mr. Hurd?
Yeah, I'd just say, you know, with deference and respect for Mr. Dickens's comments and the idea that, you know, expanding the safety zones is a good thing, I would defer to the deliberations that TAC made, where the issue was obviously discussed, and that was the recommendation we rely on, on their expertise. So I'll make a motion to approve the safety zone as presented in the materials.
Is there a second? Mr. Hellman?
There's a second, and I agree with that, and I appreciate, I also would express my appreciation to Mr. Mazur. You're eight months in, you haven't wasted any time. This was excellent presentation, this is really good work, as we have come to expect, and we are so lucky that we get such good work from our volunteers in TAC. I think the point is really salient, that I think the safety zones, and I love that you call it the Safety Board, because in a lot of ways, where we really are, the Safety Board is currently in session. But I think it is important that we do maintain credibility with drivers, and I am one, I'm also a cyclist, I'm both a vulnerable road user and a less vulnerable user, that when you physically look at the situation, I've just been scrolling here on Google Street View, and you know, you can see, and I think Town Manager made a really good point, that we have to think about the psychology of those rapid succession of speed limit signs. So I'm really comfortable starting here. I don't necessarily feel the need for the board to ask TAC to come back to us. I think that they will come back to us if they think that they wanna extend that. So that's my view. I have seconded the motion.
Mr. Dickens?
Thank you for another whack at this. So I think, I think as, as Mr. Mazur said, though, it was a close call, I think, probably in the TAC deliberations, I mean, on this. And I understand, I was thinking too about, I mean, if you have the 20 mile per hour, I mean, safety zone, I mean, right at the border with the 25 mile per hour speed limit sign for the townwide, it could create confusion. I get that, and I agree with that, you know? But, but I really would like to see, you know, this zone, you know, encompass Scoop and Scootery, you know? And so, whether we do it now, or we do it later, I hope later, sooner, that we go east of Scoop and Scootery, you know, and get that shop, you know, I hope later, sooner, I mean, that, that we go east of Scoop and Scootery, you know, and, and get that shop, you know, inside the safety zone. So if we take it to Magnolia, I think that would be good. So that they, they come out of the light, if they hit the light, because if they don't hit the light, you know, on red, they're kind of zipping along, you know, and they see a sign at Magnolia saying like, slow down, and then they're slowing down hopefully, you know, before they encounter what can be a morass of people, you know, at Scoop and Scootery, especially at nighttime, you know, in the summertime, there's like a lot of people there, and there's a lot of cars, I mean, just kind of doing, you know, funky U-turns, I mean, on, on a Mass Ave, I mean, and so, so it's just good to slow it down there. So, so, yeah, I don't think I'm going to get folks to kind of go along with extending it east, you know, uh, tonight, but please, please consider doing it really soon. That's it. Thank you, you know.
Okay, um, any further? Mr. Helmut, sorry.
Just, just one more thing, and I'm, I'm sorry, uh, thank you. I appreciate the citation of data in the original thing, and, and something that was in the memo really spoke to me that when you looked at this proposed safety zone, that the rate of collisions with vulnerable road users was fifty percent higher than a normalized comparison to Arlington Center. That really spoke to me. So I think if TAC does want to reconsider recommending eastern boundary further down in Mass Ave, I would, I would appreciate a similar consideration of the data. So if there's crash data to support that, I'd be more interested than I am tonight. I'm going to go on the assumption that the recommendation before was, was data-driven, and I think that's a really good way to make policy. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So, uh, there's no further questions or comments on a motion by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Helmut. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those votes, unanimous vote. Thank you. Let's see what you do in the next four months. I'm only kidding.
We will now go to item nine, Discussion and Vote Outdoor Restaurant and Retail Permit Application Rules and Regulations, also known as the Parklets. I mean, we had this discussion, um, at our Golds meeting, also in August, as well as, um, moving forward. The reason why it's on tonight for discussion and a vote is usually, uh, as we know, not usually, as we know the, uh, when we've granted the Parklet permits, they go from April fifteenth to November fifteenth, I believe, and, um, October is the month to apply for them. So, um, I wanted to have the board have a discussion around, I'm just going to say the Parklet, or if you want to say outdoor seating. As we know, it was born out of the pandemic, COVID, uh, traffic patterns and, um, traffic was different then as well as, um, a lot of people preferred to be outside versus inside an establishment. But now moving forward, there's many cities and towns that either have discontinued the use or what they've done, and we have from Mr. Mallard from our office, uh, he got a survey of surrounding communities because, as we all know, parking in Arlington is at a premium. First thing is safety, that I've heard from my colleagues, and the sef- second is parking. And we have heard from businesses that are but a particular business that takes one to three to four spaces, and some who that particular business, single business owner is really reliant on, you know, five-minute in-and-out parking, and this is a detriment to them. And what's the other cities and da- towns that haven't totally discontinued outdoor Parklet seating, what they've done is they've calculated, as we can see from the materials, calculated the actual cost of that, um, parking spot at anywhere from like seven hundred and fifty or, um, I'm not going to start quoting from it because I may misquote, as well as some of them have limited it to, um, directly in front of a business regardless. Meaning that, you know, if you're, God bless you, in front of a business, you want to park in front of, fourth spots in front of your business, and it turns out only one of the four is actually in front of your business. So, uh, I guess what I, and the, and the other thing is I have visited all of the, I just recently did the one in Broadway Plaza, and I remember when my dad was alive, before he passed away, would be up in the Heights on Mass Ave, and he would just lose his mind saying, um, and I've heard this from other people within the town, that, you know, this is just an accident waiting to happen, you know, who are these people out on the street? Besides the fact of, um, it's a parking spot, and it's affecting other businesses that aren't benefiting from a public spot on a public street. The number one thing is, is the safety issue, and, um, I, I look at, um, what Mr. Hurd and Mr. Diggins and the Town Manager and other do for Town Days to keep the two ends safe with buses and EMS vehicles and the like. And, you know, the last few months of my dad's life, he rolled down the window and he was yelling at people, you know, saying that it wasn't safe. So I'd like to have a discussion because we need to decide, and besides, I don't want to make this a cost factor, but, um, some of the apparatus that we use, um, if we do decide to go forward in full, no changes, go forward with some changes, um, go forward to suspend and say to the manager and to Katie Lou's eye of the Planning Department, look at if it's feasible. I, I have a personal issue with the safe, I have an issue with the safety aspect of it, then the fairness of, of the parking. But if, um, the town and/or the Planning Department can say, something can be done where it can be done safely, maybe it's still really on a sidewalk, um, and it's available for the public, whether you go into a business or not. You might just be walking by and you decide to sit and whatever. So that, that would be the options before my colleagues. Keep it as it is, um, modify it in the sense of, um, right now, you're giving one particular business use of a public space for eight months and denying that from all the other surrounding businesses for eight months. So, um, maybe refine that, maybe if we, if people do want to continue with this. I'm leaning towards not, because I think it was something born out of COVID, born out of the pandemic, when it was safer to sit out in the street, there weren't that many cars, and it made sense to people's public health, safety sake to be not inside, to have it split. But at the very least, if we do do it, take into consideration these are public parking spaces. I've looked at all the different businesses, and more times than not, those tables just aren't filled, even on a seventy-five, partly cloudy day up in the Heights. And I look at the business next to them, and I've spoken with them, and they're like, you know, you know, this is really killing my business, and it's empty all the time, so. I've spoke too much, so I apologize. I just kind of wanted to set the parameters of what's before. Mr. Hurd?
All right. Some thoughts too. No. I mean, I, I've always liked the Parklets. I think, you know, it was a little nerve-wracking when we first instituted them. I'm not aware of any major issues or injuries that we've had with it, but I definitely understand, if anything, some parts, you're dining and there's like fumes coming at you. But, I mean, I think, we, we talked about this last, where I think it's ca- gotten with the Parklets is every new business or every business that serves food or any sort of refreshment comes and asks for a Parklet. And it got to a point where we, we gave them all. And, you know, I think, I'm not at a point where I want to just completely get rid of the Parklets, but I think we need to, and I don't know if we do have a deadline to get this done, but, you know, I think we need to brainstorm a little bit as far as, I'm definitely for increasing the fees because if someone's using a commer- uh, public space for their business, then they should be able to pay and increasing to an amount that we don't feel is completely prohibitive if a business uses it appropriately, but it makes it so just not everybody comes and jumps and grabs one just because they can. And I think the fee should be per parking space. So if you have, come and ask for a large park, you're going to pay a lot more money. And I also, you know, I don't know if this needs to be in the rule, but, you know, we recently had a second Parklet at Broadway Plaza, and it's not there yet, so I don't want to act like it's sitting there empty right now. But I walked by the business the next day, it's like under construction, so. I, I, I think we should have a rule that your, your business has to be actually operating before you come and ask for a Parklet. I know sometimes they're trying to get it in before the, before the, uh, the deadline. But I think as part of the policies, including with the fees, should be some sort of consideration of whether or not the space you're using is staffed by a waiter. Because I think if in those, in what, you know, the businesses that do do that, there's a little more of a need for, you know, a specifically, a specific space, and that's, you know, it costs more money for, for you to do it. So you have to do it within a way that you think would make enough money. And, you know, again, put in the application is completely up to the board's discretion. Where we're not, we should be able to look at each individual, say, listen, you know, we support local businesses, but, you know, it just doesn't work in this location, the parking is too much in demand. And particularly in Broadway Plaza, I think, you know, there's been certain businesses that have been there for years, and I don't like to mess with people's business models, but, you know, if you shrink their space a little bit, I think we can, in the pla- the newly renovated Plaza, create sort of a common space for businesses that don't have waitstaff, where even if it's not adjacent, you can say, oh, you know, enjoy your ice cream over in, in the shared space. And, you know, for whatever, I, I mean, I, I think that, that one particular location is really not conducive for Parklets. And especially, I mean, if you're going to do it there, you got to put them together, but, you know, it's a chaotic parking lot as it is. And I, I, it's a hard, I guess it's hard to completely verbalize the policy because we're trying to give people clarity without, but without, but also trying to maintain the discretion for a case-by-case analysis. But I think increasing the fee is important. I think the fee structure should be, or, or whether or not we allow exclusivity should be based on whether it's a waitstaff. And I don't know how the rest of the board thinks about that, it's just something to think on. Because it could be, you know, say we even did it still in Broadway Plaza, if it was just a takeout place, you could say, all right, you know, we'll, we'll put the barriers there and, you know, you put some tables in there, but somebody else could come and enjoy a, a meal from somewhere else, and that's just the way it is, unless you want to pay more. But, um, so I, I guess those are my thoughts. I, I, I do still like the program, but I want to make the, make it so it's not every single business opens and asks for a Parklet just because they can. And, you know, I'm very pro Arlington business, and I want to do, it was all born out of supporting businesses during COVID and supporting restaurant, uh, residents and wanted to patronize local businesses who weren't comfortable going inside. And I think through that, there's been a kind of continuing desire to be outside on nice days. I mean, it's October, and it was in the eighties today, so, I mean, people are still using them. But I, it just, it, it, if you abuse a privilege, it goes away, right? And so if we have, you know, you know, a hundred and twenty-five Parklets, then it's cr- creates chaos. And so I think we do need to revise the policy to make it so only businesses, restaurants that really need it, use them, pay for this, for this particular space that you have. And again, think about having more common spaces for businesses that can use that type of spa- space. Clearly, everything I said today won't be verbalized in a motion, so I'm not sure we're going to be ready to vote unless it's a vote of no change from three of my colleagues, but those are my rambling thoughts.
Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I'm, well, let me start with a, a couple of questions, I mean, probably for the Town Manager and Town Council. So the money that we raise, you know, from the Parklet goes into general funds? The money that we raise from the fees goes into general funds?
That is correct.
So it, would there be a way to separate those funds into some other fund that could be used to maybe support businesses that are affected by the loss of parking?
Uh, obviously, the only way, excuse me, the only mechanism we would have to explore is whether or not that would be an allowable use for a revolving fund. And I'm not sure, not having reviewed, uh, the legislation that enables that recently as to whether or not there is a, an allowable or applicable use. It would require a bit more research.
Thank you. And, look, I mean, the fact that we are losing, you know, the two thousand dollars, you know, per spot, I mean, to me says that we need to increase the prices a lot, you know. And I would say, you know, let's do some price discovery, you know, let's raise them, maybe, maybe double them, I mean, this year, you know, and set out to, you know, the increase by two hundred and fifty or whatever, you know, each year to see where that point is, I mean, where the businesses start saying, this is no longer, I mean, worth my while, you know. Because if the businesses are pulling in enough, you know, uh, to make it worth their while, you know, to pay, I mean, two thousand dollars a year, then we're not losing money, you know. So I think the town, you know, should really try to get ourselves to a position where we're not losing money doing this, especially if the businesses are doing well enough, I mean, that they can pay that fee, I mean. So we just need to figure out, I mean, what that is, and don't ask folks, because they're going to tell you they want it more. They'll tell you, I mean, it's like, you say, well, how do you feel if we charge you a thousand dollars, I mean, for a lot, a, a spot? They'll say, no, that's too much, I mean, but you just do it and then see what happens, I mean. But, but, and, and so if they, if they are making enough money, you know, to make it worth a while, they'll do it, you know. If not, then they won't, and then we can decide what we want to do. I'll just say, you know, before the pandemic, I thought eating outdoors was uncivilized, would never want to do it, you know. But now, you know, I'm still eating outdoors only, you know, just a change, so, so I kind of like, I like the spots, you know. It is interesting, Mr. Feeney has raised the safety issue, you know, and, and, and it may be, um, and I, I never really be, I mean, I sit in, in them with the barricades, and I'm fine. I hadn't really thought about, you know, something crashing into me, but, but I guess that is something to, to consider. But I always thought that they were heavy enough, and, and if they're not visible enough.
You want to put twenty mile hour signs all the way on Mass Ave because you're scared, but anyways, go ahead.
Well, that's true, that's true, you know, well, 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 yeah, yeah, that's, that's true. And also I was thinking maybe on, on, I'm, I'm going to be consistent here, you know, and also I was thinking that maybe we could do some, some lighting on them, and, and along the question that I asked about maybe setting up a, uh, a different fund, I mean, and I'm just going to go afield a little bit here because it's my last meeting, I won't have a chance to say this any other time. You know, um, I do care about the other businesses, and that's why I wanted to see us set up something, you know, to help them out, you know. Because along with safety zones along Mass Ave, I would like to see separated bike lanes, I mean, on Mass Ave, I mean, to really make it safer for bike, like cyclists. So whereas I feel uncomfortable taking away a parking space, I mean, that could benefit, that benefits only one business, I mean, to the detriment of other businesses, I would take them all away, you know, to make it safer to cyclists, you know. But if we do that, then I think in order to help businesses, we need to create some way, you know, to help the businesses. Who could maybe make a good case, I mean, for them losing funds? Because there has been study, or at least a study, actually a couple of studies by the MPO, that says that, I mean, people don't, businesses don't benefit from the parking as much as they think they do. But let's say they could make the case, you know, then I think it'd be incumbent upon us, I mean, to try to provide some kind of, of relief for them. And, and I was in a conversation with, um, with the man, I mean, from the Board of Assessors today, and I know he'll be back to talk with us about, you know, or you all, I mean, about the, how the rates to, to set up, I mean, for, for businesses versus residents, and I know that we do, I mean, the same rate for both. I mean, I kind of explored this the last time he was here, I mean, because we raise so much more money from residents, I mean, than we do from businesses, it's like one, the ratio is like one to seventeen, you know, and a half, I mean. So if we were to do a split that was different, you know, so that maybe we raised it a penny or two more for residents, we would be able to give businesses a much bigger discount, I mean, and we would say, especially if we did something where, where we took away all the parking, it's like, this is, we as residents have this value, but we want to help the businesses, I mean, and that would give them a break, and then you can just say we're going to bring it back into alignment. I just put that out there to think about because, I mean, I really do want to see, you know, Mass Ave be safer, I mean, for everyone. And as I trek along in places and I see the separated bike lanes, I don't cycle, you know, but I feel so much more relaxed when I see, you know, that and just know the cyclists, I mean, are safer. but I feel so much more relaxed when I see, you know, that and just know the cyclists, I mean, are safer. So, like I said, I won't have a chance to say it later on. Thanks for indulging me on that one. Just wanted to put their idea out there. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I guess personally, I'm not ready to say no parklets, but I do think there are a number of them this year that I, I voted for because I felt it was only fair because we had done other ones. So, and there are a number in my head that if we're starting for next year, I probably would not support them because I have concerns about whether it's parking or where they're located or even, or even other businesses. And, and I think it gets tricky to do it on a case-by-case basis, but I certainly would support increasing the fee. I mean, we probably could start by at least doubling the fee from two fifty to five hundred. I also think that we may want to consider trying to establish some criteria for what we would approve and what we wouldn't. We may not, we may not get there. But the other thing, when we did this several years ago during, during COVID, we were concerned about that first year, and we extended the period until November fifteenth. November fifteenth seems really late, and, and as does April fifteenth as, as a beginning. So I, I would support shortening that time period as well, but I think for myself, I, I, I may not support as many next year, but I don't, I don't think I'm quite there to say I support saying none yet.
Mr. Helmut?
No, okay. Thank you. Some questions. And I appreciate the memo from the, from the Select Board Office. I think it's a good start, and the comparative information with other towns is helpful. It also shows that it is all over the map about what people are doing, and then I think that reflects maybe a little bit, another, another instance of art versus science here. But I do have a couple of questions for the town manager through the chair, if I may. And I, and I appreciate the attempt at estimating revenue. I think the caution I would give is it looks to me like that revenue assumes those meters are, are occupied during all their operating hours, and that's probably not true, you know. So, so it's probably somewhat less than the theoretical maximum, but it is, it is useful to, to be reminded that there is some revenue there. But my questions, I guess, would be on safety to the town manager. I know when I first started using these, I didn't know they were filled with water. When I learned how much water weighs, I felt better about it, but just what is your, your sense for any local data we have about safety incidents with these or just from the field in general in, in your, in your municipal colleagues, you know, about the, the kind of barriers we use? I know that Belmont just used concrete jersey barriers, and those felt great. But, you know, kind of what's, what's your view in that of your staff?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Helmut. So these are, and they have to be sort of highway department approved, and they are, they're that high visibility color, and with the weight of the water, they are rated for vehicle stopping. I will say I'm not aware of any noteworthy crashes, you know, nothing has crossed my desk. I will note that I believe we started with sixty barriers, and we are now down to fifty-eight. The two that we lost were due to vehicle damage or vehicle strikes, which tells you that right there, they're vulnerable to damage, but at the same time, there was no incident with injury reported, so it did the job.
My next question is about, on the other side of cost, and that is, do we know what we're spending on the DPW's deployment of these? DPW, sorry.
You know, another good question. I think we'd look at it in a few different ways. There's the cost of the units themselves, you know, they run roughly four hundred and twenty dollars. I don't know what the shipping would be with that. And on an annual basis, usually you're replacing the fill cap and the drain plug, so that's about twenty dollars of maintenance per unit each year. But as these start to show their age, right, they're going to be sort of reaching their life expectancy. I can expect us to need to turn over a certain number of the fleet each year. So I would, you know, venture a guess that we'd have to be replacing at least a handful each year. So I think there's probably two to three thousand dollars annually in costs of equipment themselves, and I think while we've become efficient at deploying them, you'll find one of the staff's recommendations was to no longer accept applications on a rolling basis, but to have the board review them at once, at one time, and then we can organize our deployment more efficiently. So, you know, pulling these, knowing exactly how many units are going where, pulling them out of storage, getting them staged on trucks, getting the necessary front-end loader there, because, you know, the highway division sets them up, then we have to send out the water division after the fact, and it will take, you know, between thirty and sixty minutes at each site, depending on how many barriers there are to then fill them with water. So it does become an all-day affair, probably for, you know, six people, which isn't a heavy lift when we're doing it just once to set them up and once to break it down. I think it's far less efficient when we're doing them periodically throughout the season and as new parklets are getting approved.
Yeah, good. Thank you. Have we done any work with the Economic Development Coordinator or any other personnel to try to ascertain the economic benefits or disadvantages? You know, benefits to business with the parklets, disadvantages to businesses that aren't?
Thank you. And another good point, not something that we have formalized to date. I think most of our experience is anecdotal, and of course, town staff are not always in town at times when some of these sites may be heavily utilized in the evening or on the weekend. But I would think something that you've said that we could do, if, if it was of interest to the board, is we could survey the folks who have them and/or perhaps folks adjacent to other places who have them, to at least get, you know, commentary from those establishments. You know, whether or not we'd want to rely entirely on that. I imagine that the folks that have them are going to say, yes, we need them, they're very effective, but we could at least perhaps devise a survey to try to quantify the value to the establishments if the board wished.
Thank you. So I appreciate that. I think these are, that's useful points for us to consider. I'll speak to my views now. I'd rather not actually vote on this tonight. I'd like to take some time to get a proposal that, that would accomplish a number of things. I really like the idea from Mr. Hurd of going per space, because I think that that would remove an incentive to just ask for as many as you think you can use. And I have also noticed a variety. I think I've, I've seen some parklets when I'm using that more as a resident, I think, which are almost always empty. I use one parklet that's, that's almost always full, including three or four spaces when the weather is nice. Now, I can't, obviously, that's not the case when the weather isn't. So I think maybe we could right-size this a little bit by building an incentive to only buy, buy spaces that you're going to really need that make economic sense. We'll probably learn more from that, per Mr. Diggins' point of view, than we will buy. I, I don't mind asking them, but I think, you know, letting them, letting the pricing kind of, let the business make a business decision, because they're going to really ask themselves, is this worth it? I'd like, I think that could be useful. I like the idea of not doing this on a rolling basis to minimize the town's costs for that, if we can find a way to make this kind of a one, you know, deadline, and let's, let's do them all together. I like the idea of raising the fees as well, particularly if we can as best as we can approximate covering the town's costs. I think Mr. Feeny had some interesting ideas about annualized maintenance budget, and maybe we could start to run some figures on the DPW staff and figure out what that is, and then adjust our costs accordingly. I don't think the town should lose money on this, you know. And again, that, that speaks to the businesses who really need them, then could, could still ask for them, but they're going to pay, I think, at least cover our costs, and, and hopefully have an incentive to not ask for more than they really can use, and really want to use and are really economically usable. So that, for me, that's a way of balancing some of that. I also like the idea of shortening the season, because I think that, 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 I think it was absolutely, I remember, I don't know if I was on the board, but I remember that it was important to give as much runway as we could. I'd be real surprised if come November first, we're seeing very many people out there, so. So I like the idea of keeping them, but I do like the idea of, if we can, getting some, inviting some, some feedback. I'd love to see a proposal for a pricing structure that accomplishes the things I mentioned, and a scheduling structure that, that would do that. And, you know, maybe we could look at the next year as an experiment, but I, you know, I would say, as much as I like the one that I use, the ones that I use, I see the empty ones, and I don't love losing the parking to those either, you know. So for me, this is a balancing act. And I would take, you know, if we go forward another year, I'd be looking real closely at utilization and listening really, really carefully to the, to the concerns of residents and businesses if they are creating problems. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So I-
Did everyone speak?
I think so. Mr. Hurd?
I just wanted to get clarification on what time constraints we're under to revise the policy. Is there a deadline for next year for them to?
No, at this time, there's no deadline. We would like, at the bottom of the memo we had submitted, we would like thirty days prior to the start of April just to allow DPW to not go out at full times throughout the year. But no, we send out license renewals now for parklets and outdoor restaurants. So we would like to have, you know, a vote before the end of the year when license renewals go out, but no, there is no technical deadline.
What would you say if we worked on a policy and took like a month to kind of put something together with a, everyone hates this word, subcommittee? But I think, I mean, I think the ideas, everyone seems to be, you know, generally in the same place on this one, that, you know, we could put a policy together. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't missing a whole year if, if, if we did it. So, I mean, I think we've all heard comments and, you know, we could put together revisions to the policy based on that.
Okay, so what I'll do is, I think I already see one half of the subcommittee. I'm going to tomorrow ask Ms. Marr to send out select board liaison committee appointments that will need to fill transportation advisory, not poet laureate, rainbow commission, MPO, MBT, et cetera. So I'll add this outdoor restaurant rules and regs or something like that. And see if, if two people or Mr. Hurd and someone else. I'll be, you know, I'm really averse to subcommittees, but I'll be a just-in-case person, but if somebody else wants to, and I don't mean to peg you to do it, I'm just saying that. So I'll, if Ms. Marr could add-
You and Mr. DeCoursey neglected our subcommittee on the alcohol policy. We never convened, but-
No, and I'll certainly make sure I give, and the town manager and town council can attest to this. You all certainly will get my feedback in terms of, you know, things to be considered. Because I, I've been keeping a running list as well as what I've heard from some of the other businesses that are but them, that, that don't like them. And I will ask that we throw that in, meaning, you know, do we want to consider, when you're taking two or three spaces, that you don't even use until five, six, seven PM at night, you know? Should they be able to? So if I'm not on the subcommittee, I'll get everything that I've written down, and we'll endeavor to have this. I know you want at least thirty days before, which would be April, but I think we're going to shorten that time, but my goal would be to, I'd like to say by the end of December, but I'm going to say before we start the warrant article hearings, that a subcommittee will be formed, discussions will be had, we'll throw in, I'll throw in all my stuff, and then either the last meeting in January, first meeting in February, put it before the board and establish a new policy, if that's what the board wants to do.
Yeah, that's good. And I think, and Mrs. Marr can correct me on this, but you said it would be helpful to have it before the end of the year, right? A new policy?
It would be helpful, but-
So, I mean, I think there's not, nothing that's, whoever two people are designate, designated, and I'm happy to volunteer. I think we could just jump on it. And I think we could get something to the board in November at some point, and allows, you know, a couple sessions for-
No, no, I didn't want to, it's just all these other ones, and I know I've been a nut with policies. It's really taken, some of them started back in May.
I did want to comment. Hearing the town manager refer to the barriers as a fleet shows his, the pride that he has in those orange barriers that we have.
And they're all purchased with grant money.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Feeny? And I know we'll be having discussions end of the year, next year, around the override. About how many vacancies do we have in DPW?
At this point in time, I would estimate it's probably around fifteen.
Ooh, wow.
So when we say it only takes, when you, well, I don't, I'm going to speak instead of you now, and that's, it only takes six people, you know, talking to the people that we have down the yard. First of all, we pay them the lowest and beyond the lowest in public works. So that's a discussion for another day. And I know, and if I speak out of turn, please stop me, Mr. Feeny. He's done everything but, you know, offered to take people to dinner every single night for three years to try to get people to join the Department of Public Works here in Arlington, because, but the pay, in my opinion, is, is just so gosh darn low. So that's the other thing we have to bear. Hey, I'm, I'm just talking for the first time.
Let's, a question, follow-up question?
Go ahead.
Fifteen out of what?
Oh, I don't have that number off the top of my head, Mr. Diggins.
Well, when you, I'd say out of thirty-something, thirty-seven.
Right, so that's about half.
Okay, well, out of thirty-seven, and he says fifteen, but it's more, in my opinion, it's more like twenty-two, twenty-seven vacancies.
Yeah, it's disproportionately geared towards the line-level employees. I think in terms of administrative type staff and supervisory staff, we're well-staffed. I think it's more towards the craftsman and technician where we're seeing the struggles.
All right. So Ms. Marr will send out an email tomorrow. Whoever wants to join, Mr. Hurd can indicate on that, as well as the other ones. And then I'll just internally make the appointments, unless town council tells me rules have changed now and it has to be an agenda item, but it doesn't, so then I'll do that. And then we will aim for either the first or second, well, the last meeting in November or at the very latest, the first meeting in December. Does that sound good, Mr. Hurd? Mr. Helmut?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the night where we all talk twice. I just wanted to point out, I, I missed this. I really appreciated the health department's weighing in on this for a sanitation plan being required, so that would be my suggestion to if, what comes back before, that be included.
And Ms. Marr, if you could just put a parklet, just call it parklet placeholder on the November seventeenth and December eighth meetings. So that'll be a tickle reminder for me to check in with that. So we will not take a vote on that tonight, and we will go to discussion and vote, special one-day alcohol license policy, application and policy, and seriously, I do want to thank first and foremost, Ms. Marr and town council for, this was started back in February and really started to pick up steam in April. And I do want to thank all my colleagues, because you all weighed in in terms of balancing your family, balancing your day jobs, and then also balancing getting this done. But I think in the end, it's, it's really, for anyone that wants to ask exactly what the parameters are, so they can plan appropriately if they're a business, or if they're a one-time event, whatever, that we, I think we really have a good, tight, one-day alcohol license application and policy, and I know I've bothered you guys, you gentlemen, way too much, but I think in the end, the document we have before us, nothing is perfect, and it can always be adjusted in the future, but I think this is really up to speed to where it should be. Really, there is no ambiguity, and I think it's only fair for not just the board, but anyone that wants to apply for these licenses to know exactly what the parameters are, so they can plan accordingly. So with that, Attorney Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I think that, yeah, under the chair's leadership, this is an attempt to clarify the, the application process for those seeking special one-day alcohol licenses under general law, chapter one thirty-eight, section fourteen. I know the chairs have been shepherding this throughout the course of the year. I apologize to the board for inundating it with various drafts, but that is the consequence of this board's diligence and hard work. I did speak to, I think, everyone on the board individually about their thoughts on this policy, and a lot of hard work from the different board members went into this. I think that the select board administrator, Marr, is also, contributions were invaluable. And also mentioned, Madam Chair, that we did receive correspondence from R L Z Brewing Company's council, and those were helpful, and I think that those were taken into account in some of the latest revisions. And just for the public's clarification, there is a document- And just for the public's clarification, there is a document that's been placed in the public materials at this point that is entitled Draft Special One-Day Alcohol Policy Two. That is the latest version and I think that's the result of the collaboration, you know, working with, through the legal department of all the individual members of this board who really put a lot of time into it, so I thank the members for that.
Thank you. So with that, if there's any question, comments, statements, a motion on this new, recently compiled policy, Mr. Helmut?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move approval and echo my appreciation for the hard work that went into this. I think it was a good process, including the creation of the very final draft that we have that really, I think, tightened up and incorporated all the work that had been done. One question I have or maybe a suggestion is that, just to make, I want to make sure that this, if we vote this tonight, that this makes its way into our published larger alcohol policies document so that it doesn't exist just in separation from that, that I think our larger policy needs to be harmonized. And what I don't know is whether that's going to require a separate agenda item and vote or not, but I leave that to the chair and to Attorney Cunningham to determine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a good suggestion by Mr. Helmut. I do think it would require a different vote. This is for the one-day application, but it does, it's obviously the prerogative of the board, but Mr. Helmut's suggestion does make sense to put it in as part of a policy as well, but it would require a separate agenda item to do that.
If I could just elaborate too, because I went back and looked at that and that, the larger policy contains our policies about the special one day, so I think, you know, obviously at the very least we're going to harmonize those and maybe it's just a wholesale replacement, but that's probably a formality that we ought to do to avoid confusion of anybody reading both documents.
And could I be so bold to say, if you could coordinate that?
I'd be delighted to.
I'm not being...
Yeah, yeah, no, you got it. You're a good delegate.
With Attorney Cunningham and maybe one of the November meetings?
Perfect.
When you and Attorney Cunningham think it's appropriate, is that okay?
That's perfectly right. And also, thank you to my colleagues for being willing to table last week. I was delayed by airlines and couldn't participate in the discussion and that was, that was one of my concerns and I think the others were resolved in this last week with some of the work that was done, so I appreciate the board's patience and crediology with that.
Thank you for volunteering, all caps.
You know it.
So I'll take, the motion by Mr. Helmut, is there a second? Mr. Diggins?
Yeah, I'll second and I'll say it was a pleasure getting out, what, like at eight o'clock or something because we table so much, so it was no problem at all. But on sixteen, you know, item sixteen, I mean, it says, you know, the second sentence, an individual applicant, I mean, then current calendar year may have their license if granted count towards. So does that may imply flexibility or is it like it really will count? Because there's the may versus shall, you know what I mean? You know, so I just want to know to what extent, you know, that may, you know, means that it really has to versus like there's flexibility and then so then, under what conditions do we exercise our flexibility?
Attorney Cunningham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yep, Mr. Diggins correctly cites the word may, it's a permissive word used in the legal sense. I think it's by design to allow for this board and future boards to exercise its discretion as a local licensing authority, but it's certainly different from shall and it would permit the exercise of discretion by the board.
So then I asked you, Madam Chair, is that something we want?
What do you mean?
Do we want that flex, that, or do we want them all to count towards the thirty? Because it's like, under what conditions do we not count it towards the thirty versus do?
I would say we keep the may for the current and the future board flexibility with the caveat that the language in here basically says the current select board has the ultimate, is the ultimate decision-maker regarding who is applying for the one days. And if that, if, it's up to us to say, if you're saying it's thirty different people, we also ultimately can make the decision to say, that's what you're saying, it's thirty different people, but we have the discretion to say that that's not something we accept and we can count them a different way. Attorney Cunningham, tell me a better way of my saying that.
No, thank you, Madam Chair, I think you said it well, but also I think that the first sentence of that section is also instructive. I think that provides some indication and clarity to applicants about how the board intends to calculate that. Even though the permissive use of the word may is in the next sentence, I do think that it's pretty clear based on the section in its entirety that it's the board's intent to likely, in most circumstances, but may, count as, and if somebody comes forward from a particular entity, it's going to count towards their thirty cap. You can't send forth differing individuals from the same entity and expect to receive thirty, 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 it's going to be the same entity.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I only say that, I think it helps an applicant if they know that because then they may say, okay, our business plan says we can do twenty-nine, we can do thirty, we can do forty-one, we have sixty possibilities, we put our business model in, we run everything and we picked the best twenty-nine for our business, the best thirty, the best thirty-one, the best forty-one, so, and that's why I say this is... It's taken a long time to compile, okay.
Don't worry, I'm not holding it up, you know?
Dude, I've been doing this since February, please! You're coming in at the end!
Anybody else have a chance to speak?
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yeah, no, thank you, Madam Chair. I think if you look at the earlier version of the draft, there was an additional sentence saying that we have sole discretion to determine the thirty days, but that discretion's there anyway even without its inclusion in this new draft and there are some ambiguities there that this may language wasn't earlier and it's here now. And I think as the chair said, there may be some instances where we have to look at the specific circumstances of the request rather than use the word shall.
Mr. Helmut?
And I think I would further, I agree with that, by the way. I don't think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Chair or Attorney Cunningham, there's nothing that would prohibit, say, a vendor or a business to be hired by an entity that's applying, you know, so if a business did the thirty days, did the thirty licenses, but then say a separate entity, legally separate entity said, hey, we want you to supply the beer for our party, you know, that wouldn't be a problem, right? So we're not, is that my correct understanding?
Attorney Cunningham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Helmut, this correct?
Thank you, so I'm happy about that and I think that's, you know, that could be helpful to business in town that, you know, wants to have a good footprint but also not run afoul of the intent of the thirty-day limit.
Mr. Hurd?
He wasn't there. Brain stopped at parklets. This is good, I appreciate all the work that's been in this and I think, you know, it's, everything's a work in progress and this is a good end result of a lot of work in progress.
And it's certainly not, it's just in the spirit of, I think, I think it's best when you know the process and you know the protocol and you know the rules. And I do want to say that the Arlington Beer Garden, I know recently a town event up at the Arlington Reservoir, the town manager indicated to me that they certainly took into account the event and Arlington residents coming out and worked with the town and town officials to really cater the event and price per pour and things like that. And I do appreciate that because, you know, it's nice to have a business that's not outsullied just to make the pentultimate, get that word in there, profit on each and everything. I do appreciate that. I remember years and years ago, before I even got on the board, when I got on Town Day, I remember hearing from so many parents saying, you know, I should be able to send my kid with twenty dollars and they can do everything at Town Day and standing there saying, well, I was a kid that couldn't even get a dollar. So, and structuring an event around that, so, and not a lot of businesses, and they don't have to do that. People are in business to have business and be profitable, but I do appreciate when a business not only is in the community but gives back to the community, so I just wanted to point that out, I appreciated that. So, sorry to go on on that and I just love my colleagues signing up for all these things on a motion by Mr. Helmut, seconded by Mr. Diggins. Any further comments or questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. New business, Ms. Marr?
No new business, thank you, Mrs. Millen.
New policy, I mean business, Attorney Cunningham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know it's new business, but I just want to say from a legal perspective, it has been a real pleasure dealing with Mr. Diggins. He's a dedicated, hard-working public servant, has been a pleasure to deal with. I thank you, Mr. Diggins, for all your work.
Mr. Feeny, town manager?
No new business, but I do second that. All the best, Mr. Diggins.
Mr. DeCoursey?
No new business.
I'm going to save you for the end. Mr. Hurd?
In the spirit of Mr. Diggins, I'm going to keep my new business under five minutes. No new business.
Welcome back. Mr. Helmut?
The only new business is, it's clear to me that somebody else is going to have to really read that consent agenda carefully and I think I might have to sign up for that led by the example we saw tonight of Mr. Diggins with the eagle-eyed for detail, assuming nothing, and I think that's a good example of diligence and I do appreciate the hard work you've done for that and so many other things for the town.
Thank you. My new business, just to reiterate, what we've also done in the past on a vacancy, they can submit their name, they don't have to send, submit a letter of interest, CV or resume, but they can, Ms. Marr, but they also can, any member of this board, and I'll make sure I have a conversation with the town moderator, what we've done in past practices, if someone says my name is John Mahan and I'd like to be considered and that's it, then that individual member, that's enough, that's all we need, but it does have to get to Ms. Marr by October fifteenth at four PM. And my other new business is, and I can't remember because my brain's just scrambled right now and I'm compartmentalizing the fact that you resigned, so I'm trying to avoid it, but, so if I did forward this, I apologize, but as you know, I seem to be the queen, the king, the whatever of emergency meetings, whether it's Safe Roots to Schools, the Uncle Sam Monument Jazz Bands, and most recently got you all together again for the Schwamm Mill. And I just want to let you know that Janet O'Rourke did send an email to me asking me to extend her thanks to my colleagues for agreeing to do that as well as the select board office and others. And she reported, again apologized, and I said, no need to apologize and thank the board, we all wanted to thank her and Dermot and Lynette and others, they had over twelve-hundred Arlington residents that attended the, I can't remember, it was the eighth or ninth annual Schwamm Mill celebration with the beer garden. And I just put to Janet, I'll try to remember that next year that that doesn't happen again, but it's really hard for the chair as well as the select board office with so many different events that we, this isn't something we could have caught, but when it happened, we made sure that, we wanted to make sure that event happened, so. But I do want to thank my colleagues and hopefully I won't be calling anymore, I pride myself on doing prep and getting everything done and it's going to be a well-oiled machine and run fine, and I've already had three emergency meetings, so I do appreciate my colleagues being able to accommodate their family and work schedules to do that. So with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn by...
So moved.
Mr. Hurd, Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Hurd, non-debatable, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous vote.